Good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Wickers. I'm the mayor of Conwood Heights. Today is uh Tuesday, May second, two thousand twenty-three, and this is a Conwood Heights City Council business meeting. So uh we are going to begin with the 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 Pledge of Allegiance. And uh I'm gonna ask our District Two Councilmember Scott Bracken if he would lead us in there.
Please stand and repeat after me.
Thank you, Scott. So couple days after our last uh business meeting, um our uh District One Councilmember Doug Peterson um passed away uh from a short battle with cancer. Um, I'm gonna ask for a a moment of silence in a second, but I just wanted to read um an article came out today on our in our newsletter that we um give to to all of our residents and and uh the council wrote together um something to 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 let Doug and his family know how much we loved him, and I'm gonna read just part of it uh before we get started. Uh at the end of every Conwood Heights City Council meeting over the past three years, a common sight was Councilmember Doug Peterson talking with the residents, city staff, or other council members with his characteristic engaging smile, sense of humor, and enthusiasm. Doug loved Conwood Heights and its residents. Sadly, however, after a brief best battle with cancer, Councilmember Doug Peterson, sixty-five, passed away on Thursday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Doug began a city council term in January of two thousand twenty. Just after he was sworn into office, a number of difficulties and challenges impacted the city. The pandemic, earthquake, strong winds, and civil unrest all occurred during his first two years. Doug's insight, wisdom, presence, and optimism were critical in helping the city successfully weather such challenges. Uh City Manager Tim Seiny said, "I would often receive a call from Doug expressing encouragement and appreciation for efforts of the city staff, which was very helpful during these times. His conversations with Doug helped ease the burdens that our cities face during these difficulties." The relationships Doug fostered with city residents and committee members was another key element of his leadership. He truly cared about people and would often spend hours on the telephone with staff and residents, talking about issues and working to solve problems. His enthusiasm and love for community helped foster positive relations and move forward important policies that enhance the city. Mayor Mike Wickers said that Doug had become one of his closest friends and allies these past eighteen months. Doug could make anyone laugh at any moment and was dedicated to his constituents. There was nothing more important to Doug other than his family than helping our community increase its quality of life. Doug's relationship with Mayor Wickers, former Mayor Peterson, and the city council members with whom he served was a true source of joy and satisfaction for him. Doug Peterson, um Councilmember Ellen Burrell said, "Doug Peterson and I found common ground in sharing stories of our childhood. He riding horses amidst the orchards of Conwood Heights and me within the orange groves and open fields of Orange County. We discovered mutual friends from our business careers and found ways to talk about diverse subjects together over the months that we served together on the council. His dedication to family and community were crystal clear." Councilmember Scott Bracken said, "Doug always had a smile and a sense of humor. He worked hard, whether it was helping someone with an issue or clearing his parents driveway. Time and again this winter from all the snow, he worked very hard. He made you feel like he was your best friend. The immense loss we feel is indicative of the love and respect that we have for him." Councilmember Sean Newell also paid tribute to Peters, to Doug. In the short time that I have known Doug, he showed himself as a giving and compassionate man. I will cherish his energy and engaging manner. Councilmember Doug Peterson was an enthusiastic champion for Conwood Heights. Common scene of Doug talking with staff, residents, and councils will sadly not be occurring anymore. Doug did so much for our city, and the loss of his great energy, leadership, sense of humor, personality, engaging smile, passion for the community will leave a definite void in Conwood Heights. We will greatly miss Doug Peterson. Have you noticed we have uh some flowers uh where where Doug would be sitting? And uh um we're grateful for the outpouring of love from the community towards uh Councilmember Peterson and to his family. Thank you. The next item on our agenda for this evening is the citizen comment period. Uh this is the time for citizens to address the council concerning whatever matters they desire. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please review the public comment procedures on the last page. If you have already filled out a comment card, if you haven't, please do so and hand it to a staff member. When making comments, we request that you speak into the microphone so that your comments can be recorded, that you give your name, and that you avoid insulting language or comments. Uh the council's here to listen, but you shouldn't expect to engage in a back and forth. If you do raise questions, staff will respond to you within a few business days. The first comment card I have here is from Mike Falk. Mike?
Hey, thanks for letting me speak. Uh first of all, my condolences to the city and staff on the passing Councilperson Peterson. Okay, that said, this morning at about ten forty-five, um I decided to walk over to the rec center to get a swim in. To do that, I have to cross Bengal at the crosswalk. Three times, twice going over and one time coming back. I had my foot in the crosswalk and car just flew through. Just ignored, totally ignored me. Now I'm expendable, but my grandkids and a lot of other kids who've crossed that street are not expendable. I don't know what can be done, maybe three hundred citations a day or something till people figure it out. Something. Um well, I guess that's it. Anyway, it was a kind of a dangerous situation. One car that went by me practically ran over my foot.
You you're saying before you get out of the crosswalk, cars are starting to come? Is that what the issue is? They're not waiting for you to clear it completely?
I had my foot in the crosswalk to start crossing. They they saw me and they just zipped right through. So we need to do something about that.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, Mike. Uh Richard Jensen. You're the only other card that I have. Do we have anybody online? So sorry, yeah, you're just your last. Hi.
How you doing? Hi. My condolences to Doug. I knew him and I'm sorry. What a what a great person. I'll try to be quick. My name is Richard Jensen. My wife Shauna and I have lived in Sandy for twenty-five years and have raised children here, all having attended Brighton High School. With our last child currently as a junior next door, without problems or concerns, Mayor Wickers knows us, helped coach his son on the football team. Each of our children has participated in at least one or several sports programs, including soccer, football, basketball cheer, and or drill for four years each. We have literally attended over five hundred Brighton High School games or competitions, all without ever witnessing or something concerning. Until late of two thousand twenty-one and early two thousand twenty-two, my wife and I attended a Brighton High basketball game in November of twenty-one at Alta High School, in which our daughter was cheering. At the end of the game, some of the students on both sides and some coaches began some back and forth arguing. Some kids began getting pretty excited with words and then started pushing and shoving. My wife and I witnessed a Conwood Heights uh Cottonwood Heights Police Department officer and those from Alta begin to try to keep things under control. At one point, we witnessed an officer named Brian Griffiths handcuff a Brighton High student and begin to take him away. We both noticed how physical he was with the boy, almost dragging him faster than he could walk while holding his arms already handcuffed behind his back as as high as he could, which really didn't allow the boy to walk with extreme difficulty, without extreme difficulty. I think a few parents, including us, said out loud, "That seems a little rough, and we don't think you need to be so physical with him. He is already handcuffed," to which he told us to move on, and then he verbally said, "F Brighton High School." Some of us parents especially were startled to hear that and began to just walk out to follow both the officer and the boy out into the hall. The officer then slammed the boy into the lockers and told him to sit down. And told him to sit down. Some of us again said, hey, that is unnecessary, to which he replayed. We all needed to leave immediately. Most began to leave, but reluctantly, one mother. Of a close friend of the boy refused to leave and that and. The officer became very rude and upset with her. She said. I am not leaving until his parents arrive to pick him up where he is released. The officer even told another teacher who was walking down the hall. With some of the parents that she couldn't proceed down the hall any further as she was just trying to go down to her office. She was really upset that the officer refused. We eventually left, but later heard. The Cottonwood Heights Police had filed charges against this mother for disorderly conduct, failure to leave and trespassing. But we honestly could not believe that. Nicole Hilton spent twenty five hundred dollars in legal fees to get fight the charges. They were finally dismissed. Because the PD could not produce a video. Then last year. In two thousand twenty two, my wife and I and a couple of our children attended a basketball game at Olympus High School. Primarily as fans of Olympus. Because some of our close friends were playing. And to be close with family who whose children attended Olympus and who also watched and to also watch our daughter. We sat, however. Mostly with Brighton High School, although several Olympus families were seated close by. Following the game. We noticed this same officer, Brian Griffiths, run to almost the center court. And he started pointing at kids randomly towards a certain door. And when any of them seemed to try to walk. A different way. He would shake his head no and point the direction of the door. We actually stopped noticing this until we got to the floor ourselves. And we could hear him yelling or speaking forcefully that certain kids, especially boys, needed to leave. He was also demanding that kids went. That went to Olympus to leave also, which was very surprising. All of which is on video. I asked a couple of the boys what they did. And they said they had no idea. He wouldn't tell them. He was making these kids. Feel like they were illegally and trespassing, whether they were waiting for a parent to ride home. Or wanted to say hi. Or say goodbye to family.
Rich, we're way past time. Do you?
It's probably another two minutes. Yeah.
Okay, so so let's let's do this. Why don't it sounds like you've got that all written out? Is there a way that you could email us and we'll distribute it to the entire council?
You bet.
Okay, thank you. Leslie Kovac.
Hi, my name is Leslie Kovac. You guys have all seen me here before. I'm coming here for a very short message. We timed it out, should take about a minute and a half. First, I would like to thank a couple of Cottonwood Heights workers. My thanks goes out to the Public Utility Department. For checking on Ferguson Creek, which runs right next to my house. And is running very fast. And very swift. I am very pleased that the guys have come up twice a day. To check on it. To make sure that the culverts are clean, make sure that everybody's safe. I'm very concerned that it's going to be bad this year. But right now it's great. Secondly. I would like to give a big thank you to the Cottonwood Heights Police. For calmly handling the situation in my neighborhood. Which often includes right now, closing a big cottonwood canyon. And the continual ski traffic that cuts through my neighborhood. Your officers have been professional. And kind. And interested in. Ask letting me ask questions of them as to what they're doing. So those were kind of my two comments about our workers in the city. I'd also like to remind you that I would like to see our city be louder. In response. To the gondola. I would like that to step back. I'd like our city to step up. And make a statement publicly that we don't want the gondola here. It is going to impact every fragment of our community. We're going to have a parking structure less than a quarter mile upstream. From a. Our major water system here. Which will be thousands of people there. Please stand up. Please make the public comments. Please go to Wasatch Front Regional Council. Please stand up to UDOT. They've not made the right selection. They haven't made the right selection for our community. Please stand up. Let's move forward and not have the gondola here in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Appreciate your time. No other comments online? Any other submissions?
No, no.
Thank you. I'll close the citizen comment period. So item five, we have two. Quarterly staff reports. So we look forward to these. These are important updates and a number or five point one. Is that public works report? We're going to have our public works director Matt Ship coming up and give us a. Presentation.
Hey. Mayor and council. I know. Think we practice every time, right? Sorry about that. So this is just want to give you a quick update on the quarterly report. I missed last month, I think, because. Well. I was in a sunny, warm place, so I apologize. So. Just to share with you really quickly, usually at this time of year. I kind of give a report just on how the. Last snow season went to give you an idea of what would happen. So I'll briefly go over that and then one more issue. I'm going to kind of skip. Most of the engineering this. Quarterly report, we have a lot in the queue, just not a lot to report at this time. But they give you an idea of some numbers from. This last fiscal year on the. On the snow and how things went. Just for your information, we had. We had, we responded to fifty. Little over fifty five. Snow events this past fiscal year. Typical year for us is about thirty events. So we we had quite a bit of snow as evidenced by. Our mountains and things that we're seeing that are going on. And give you an idea of where we spent that time and that. We we estimate now these estimates, these inches that you're seeing right here on the snow. Once again, reminder. That's where we measured at the shop, just on the little porch out back. We have a scale and we just. Kind of get ideas of this of what we're seeing. So it. For the public's information. It's not going to match Salt Lake City numbers. We have some, we have. Last snowstorm, we had twenty four inches up on the bench and we had about, you know, fifteen down here, so it can vary. We've seen it, but we estimate about one hundred ninety six inches total. We used approximately fifty eight hundred tons of salt this year. And our crew. Just to give you a rough idea of what they did, traveled about fifty thousand miles. In their trucks and that's. That's recorded on our GPS units. So when the snow hits, they are out running. And also just to toss something out there. We at any given time, we were down three trucks during this and in and the. Two employees. So a lot of this work was done by shortened staff and a short equipment. And then just by way of information. We try, we we work hard to try to hit anywhere between two twenty five and two fifty pounds of salt per mile traveled. And as you can see, we kind of came pretty close at two twenty six. Once again, that's measured by scoops of salt and miles traveled and taking. Taking those numbers. So I just wanted to give you an idea of where things are, or we we hope. We're done with snow. I thought we were done March. The end of March, but as you recall, April, I even had to add a new column on our snow tracking because we didn't even track April. And we got hit pretty hard for about one day there and then day before and day after put a lot of. Strain on things. We have. So any questions on the salting season, if you will, for lack of a better term? Where we are?
We're okay budget wise with all the salt that we use.
We overall, we are okay overall, yes.
Yeah, the good thing, if I may add, we haven't. We haven't reduced our budget in past years when we've had reductions and so we've been able to. To have an adequate amount and not not be impacted too much.
Right, yeah. And like I said, the overall public works budget, I'm not saying the salt's not above. We we use quite a bit of salt, as you can tell by the fifty eight hundred tons. That we put out there, but. Staff is tired. Vehicles are tired. And so just a little. Commend my staff for the work they did this year and. Lot of long nights, lot of long days, but. They managed and we made it, so. We'll move on also.
Salt will not be one of the underexpenses that we'll see at the end of.
Not on this one. No, sir. No, sir. It won't be.
But it won't be the dramatic over.
That we see in other communities.
Cities have been recording.
Yeah, like.
Severitally budgeted.
Yeah, like. Tim said, we. We've held ours flat. Since I've been here, we've held the number flat. Some years we've come short. We've rarely gone over, but yeah, it we haven't seen the impact other communities have, but. It's it. There is a little bit of an impact. Okay, just give you, you've heard a little bit about this in the work session, but I wanted to highlight some things here. We've talked about it estimated eighty four, eighty five thousand bags are filled. We've used about twelve hundred tons of sand on this. Thirty two thousand bags empty at the yard, ten thousand bags filled at the yard. And pre deployed bags at all the crossings along Deff Smith Canyon. Just, these are some things we've been doing since the end of the snow. Since April. I mean, so we've been working on this. Real quick, we last three weeks, we've had bag filling at the yard, Monday through Friday, three to eight and Saturday, eight to three. We've filled approximately ten thousand bags in the yard. We've mentioned that. Church events over the last month has filled approximately thirty thousand bags. To be used in deployment in neighborhoods. In these locations, Creek Road Chapel around fifteen hundred east. Creek Road, I'm sorry, Creek Road LDS Chapel around fifteen hundred east, the Creek Road LDS Chapel at twenty eight hundred. The Saint Thomas More Catholic Parish at around twenty nine hundred. And then the Highland Drive Chapel, which is off Forest Creek Lane. These are places we've held these events. They've been very successful. We're very pleased with the outcome and I think, like I said, we've had a couple more of these. Now I just want the public for council and the public to know those bags that are sitting there right now. Are for residents to come up and take if they need them. They were filled by volunteers for that purpose. I doubt we're going to lose nine thousand bags from a resident, so we'll have plenty for. Emergency deployment if we need it. And like I said, we have ten thousand in the yard for that as well. If it comes to that. And the idea on the deployment is. We channel water down roads and get it back in the creek as soon as we can. We've got plans made up for that. We worked hard. On this and so we are. We feel like we are as prepared as we can be. The staff has worked hard to do this, so. And we are also encouraging residents to sandbag if they if they're concerned, their window wells and their doors. That's the important thing. It's hard to hold back a creek if it starts to rise, but you can protect window wells and doors. So that's what we're encouraging. Like I said, three more events planned. And want to give a shout out to the volunteers. You've already heard that a little bit. When we talk about the ten thousand bags in the yard. All volunteers. All the bags at the churches, all volunteers, all bags that are deployed. Volunteers. Many people came and did their own bagging, which what we offered. But at the same time, they would fill one or two extra for, you know, every five they might fill and leave them in the yard. So it was a great effort by the residents. This is one of those where. We are very small in staff. Make, you know, we are a small staff. We could not do what we've done or do what has been done without the volunteers. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we've had individual residents, we've had church groups, scout troops. The high schools, elementary schools. Unified fires come out, school, different school clubs, high school sports teams showed up. Local businesses and just family groups. Various city departments came out to help out along the way, police, planning. Just different groups came out to help out. There was and then we had non residents who came over just to help bag. It was very interesting to see, and I believe we also had a. The county mayor and some folks came out to help out. A little bit as well. So from. From public works to the volunteers, we want to say thank you. It's. I wish I could name them all individually. I can't, but so I thought I'd throw out the groups that were there. So it was a great, great effort and it's not done, so sorry.
Definitely in the hundreds of people that have showed up. Do you think you've hit thousands yet or?
Oh, definitely. Well, just this Saturday. Up on top of the world, well, this past. Yes, Saturday, top of the world. They had, they logged in like. Five hundred people showed up just for that Saturday. So.
Thousands.
Yeah, thousands, thousands of hours and people. Have shown up and like I said, we've had. We've had. Toddlers out there. You know, hanging out and playing while the parents and brothers and sisters were filling bags. It was family events, so. It, once again, great effort and we, like I said, we're not done. Paul. Brenneman. Our emergency manager has plans for volunteers if we have to deploy. He's got that laid out. Once again, those are volunteers. And I think it's great. So that's my report for this quarter. Snow. And melting snow. Is is really what this last season has been.
I appreciate I appreciate you putting those, helping get those coordinated. You talk about the toddlers and the kids that are there. It leaves an impression. Yeah, I mean, I. I probably could come up with a few things that I told you I did when I was. Mid teenager. But I do remember going down to the county yard and filling sandbags in nineteen eighty three. And what that was, the service opportunities help. Not just the people that are immediately, but it it, you know, for those families that show up and the all the. Tip in and help your community. So. Thank you, guys, for being tired.
That's like I said, we couldn't. We wouldn't be able to fill, you know, a thousand bags to be honest with you. It's. A lot of work put into this, so. And that's what we have. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt. We. Tim and I were able to go to to your last staff meeting. Which was actually really fun for me. So we were able to. We gave every one of the public works employees a gift card. In appreciation for all the the nights that they were out plowing roads so that our residents could drive. And it was it was fun to be there. They warned me. They said, these guys aren't going to talk a lot to you. So we tried to get them to to engage to us and what we ended up talking a lot about was football. But that's okay. It was fun to 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 talk with them and anyway, thanks for all you do. Tough year and and we're not through with it yet, so we'll hopefully get the water down and then maybe let you relax a little bit.
It's. It, yes, it's. It's doing what we want right now, though, that's for sure. It's it's coming down. About a hundred and seventy CFS right now on the little cottonwood, so. Little bit to go, but it's working.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, our next report will be from our finance and administrative services director, Scott Jurges. We'll give our, this is going to be his quarterly. Update. This is not the the budget that we're working on. We'll get that to get to that in a second.
Okay. So. We generally focus on our revenues when we do these and we're going to continue to do that. So starting with our sales taxes. Our sales taxes, you can see last year, we collected eight million seven hundred fifty five thousand dollars in sales tax.
Our sales taxes, you can see last year, we collected eight million seven hundred fifty five thousand dollars in sales taxes. Year to date, we're sitting, and we just got a new update today, but it didn't change this by a heck of a lot, two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. Uh, ahead of our twenty twenty two numbers. And that's just barely over halfway through the year, and so we're kind of projecting this to land somewhere in the nine twenty point two million dollar range, maybe just a tad under that. Our budget is eight point eight million dollars in this year, but with our projection of being about nine point two, our. In our budget for next year, twenty twenty four, we put in nine point five million dollars for this. That's around a three hundred thousand dollar increase if things keep staying on this trajectory. And we think that that's a, a good trajectory to have.
Did you say we just got March's numbers in today?
We, well, we got them actually a couple days ago, Dave was out of town, um, but, and it came in a little bit higher, we're two hundred and forty some thousand dollars ahead.
Year to date.
Year to date.
Do you remember what the number was?
I, not up.
Okay.
My head, yeah, not up on my head. This is the county option highway transportation sales tax. And this was, in, in its early years, we were receiving right around six hundred thousand dollars. In twenty twenty two, it ballooned up to almost seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We were a little worried that might be an anomaly for some reason, however, we're staying right there in this year. We're actually gonna project to be right near about eight hundred thousand dollars on the year uh for our collections. And our budget next year, we're going to suggest that that be at eight hundred thousand dollars, uh huh, because of the new norm, if you will. Of where this tax is kind of trending. So that's a, a good projection on that. The transient room tax, this is a new slide, we haven't shown this before, but this is becoming a more significant revenue source for us. In our, in our past, you know, back in twenty twenty, it was only fifty four thousand dollars we were receiving. Then it started to go up, especially as we had the new hotel added up on, and as part of the Canyon Center project. So now we're seeing that trend, you know, we had a hundred and forty four thousand last year. And we're about twenty two thousand dollars ahead, we're gonna project this year in the hundred and seventy five thousand dollar range. And that's where we set our budget for next year as well, is it a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, and I think we'll leave it at that uh, projection. Projection for right now, um, unless we get some more hotels that come into our city. But that seems like it's a pretty good uh, projection. Um, our. Municipal energy tax. This is the taxes that are, is applied to any natural gas sales or electricity sales within the city. This tax uh is, it's relatively consistent, but we did see an upturn between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And we, we attribute that to the actual rates of. Electricity and gas rates that changed during that time, because this is a, a percentage driven tax. We have not changed our tax rate that we collect, or that we uh, collect on that. We collected a two million one hundred seventy three thousand last year, we're about forty one thousand ahead of last year, it wasn't an extremely cold winter. Um, in, in terms of, you know, that, there was a lot of snow, but it wasn't an extremely cold winter. And so, you know, it's kind of interesting that we're ahead as much as we are. But I would project this probably in the two point two five million dollar uh, range. And for next year, we budgeted uh, two point three million dollars for this particular. Uh, line item of revenue. Our cable franchise tax, our cable uh, taxes are based on uh, again, a percentage of the cable. Bills that are out there, as, as they segregate the cable bills into cable TV and data. We do see a little bit of erosion of this, and you can see how it's gone down a little bit, it bumped up just a teeny bit last year. Um, but based on where we are right now, we're about nine thousand behind twenty twenty two. Um, I would guess we'll probably collect somewhere around three hundred and ten thousand for the year that we're in. And we left the budget at the same three hundred thousand for our twenty twenty four budget that we're proposing. For class C roads, this is the money that comes into us from the thirty or so sand a gallon uh, revenue that comes on fuel. It's a little bit of a different rate on uh, gas versus diesel, so there is a little bit of variability uh, on, in terms of what we're collecting. But we saw a huge spike between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Um, the reason why twenty twenty one was down some is when we really weren't able to do a lot of traveling because of COVID. But then in twenty twenty two, we saw this huge, huge spike that was way above what it was in the prior year. Well, I don't know the data behind all this, uh, we don't have direct availability of that, so I'm not sure what got us there. But it seems that it's continuing on, because we're about ten thousand ahead of that prior year, and that's through ten periods of collection. This one, um, the, the periods don't actually match out, it actually ends up being that. The April collection period is our last that we get to report in the year, because this comes in and we receive it as it's reported. It has to be reported between, before June thirtieth. But we're looking at probably being about one million four hundred and twenty seven thou, or twenty five thousand dollars for the current year. And our budget for uh, our twenty twenty four budget that we're submitting is one point four million dollars. And so that's a, a good uh, trend for that. And then the last item is our general fund expenditures. Our expenditures don't always come in evenly, they do fluctuate around a little bit in terms of how they come in, we are ahead of our. Uh, last year's uh, budget, some of that is due to our uh, state and local fiscal recovery funds that we received. We, some of our funds that we received last year, we carried forward into this year, as well as uh, the funds that we re, um, expanded during this year. And then um, just kind of our personnel increases tend to bring this ahead, but we're about one point four million ahead. Of our prior year. Uh, I'm not concerned about it, I've looked at all the different departments and divisions, and we're trending in a good way. That I think will be um, underneath our, our twenty million four hundred fifty nine thousand dollar current budget. And believe that um, we'll land and, and still make all of our projections that we've contained in our twenty twenty four budget. In terms of uh, this current year that we're in. So that's all I really have in terms of our quarterly financial update, is there any questions specific to any of the items?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Scott, appreciate that, don't go very far. Uh, next on our agenda. Is our legislative action items, we have six to, to consider for the council this evening. Uh, the first is item six point one, which is consideration of resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty. Adopting a tentative budget for the period of. One July twenty twenty three through thirty June twenty twenty four. Providing for a public inspection of such budget, establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider adoption of such budget. And providing for public notice of such hearing. So we will have you, uh, Scott, keep going and, and go through our. Process before we vote to, to adopt a tentative budget.
And, and just a note for anybody who's online listening or is curious about or hear and, and is curious about more details on this. We just went over about a forty five minute presentation in our last meeting. That um, you can hear, you can either, you can go to YouTube, you can go and hear the mix far. Recording of that, there are several ways that you can see that and see the, the details that we went over, we're gonna go over it a little bit more summary level here. But you can also, but tomorrow we will have placed out on our website, this package. Uh, that's seventeen pages long, that goes through all the details that I'm gonna go through today. And you'll be able to see all of that detail and, and do anything that you need and want to do to that. But we'll have that placed on our uh, on our website tomorrow. So going through, first thing that we do is we kind of project our current budget of where we think we're gonna land. We think we're gonna land our budget with a fun ending fund balance of our current year about eight point one million dollars. And that's about thirty one percent of our budgeted revenues for the current year that we're in. And we believe that's a pretty accurate uh, projection for where we are right now. Of the, that money. We then have revenues and things that come in, and I'm gonna kind of go down here to the end of our revenues. In our, in our tax type revenues, we're expecting about one point two five million dollars uh. Increase, that's about a six point one percent increase overall in, in our collections throughout the year. Other revenues, and, and I've mentioned them in, in my quarterly report, is our class C roads going up, and then also we've removed. Our state and local fiscal recovery fund grant that was in there for two million dollars um, in there. So that means that our total revenues would be budgeted at twenty five million three hundred fifty two thousand in our general fund. And that's a decrease of six hundred and two thousand, but when you take out that two million for the American. Rescue Plan Act funds, it's actually a one point four million dollar increase on our ongoing revenues. So that's a five point eight percent overall increase. On expenditures, there's a myriad of expenditure changes, but I'm gonna go down to the summary. So overall expenditures are recommended at twenty one million eight hundred fifty thousand. And that is an increase of one million three hundred and ninety thousand after taking out all uh, non recurring grants. And things, that's made up of a seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollar personnel cost change. Two hundred and seventy thousand in UFA changes, and that number is a placeholder and will change probably downward. Um, by around fifty thousand or so dollars when we get the final numbers in a few weeks. Sixty two thousand for Cottonwood Heights Recreation Increase, a twenty seven thousand reduction in mayor and council items. Thirty five thousand dollar increase, that's a, again, a placeholder for liability insurance in the city manager area. A forty thousand dollar increase for our biannual election costs. Fifteen thousand increase for attorney costs. Ninety four thousand increase in police costs. Thirty four thousand dollars in IT costs increases. Five thousand in ordinance enforcement costs, fifteen thousand in community and economic development costs, and a hundred and eleven thousand nine fifty. In public works increases. So. You know, that's kind of the quick summary, and there is more details in the packet. Transfers out, two point seven five million dollars for public works capital related projects. Debt service, two million four hundred and five thousand. That's follows there, and to our CDRA fund, five hundred and sixty thousand for specific to the hillside debt service. And then two hundred thousand to our stormwater fund, so when you take all that into account, it's a use of our fund balance of two million four hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh, that would leave us with an ending fund balance of five million six hundred and eighty four thousand. And then, and again, this is before any under expand, this would be the net budgeted number, and we would expect that it would actually land a little better than this. That would be twenty two percent of our uh, revenues that we have included in the budget. Which is below the thirty five percent limit that you have to, with, we have to abide with in the state statute. We have to hold five percent according to state statute, that would be one point two million dollars, and an additional two hundred and fifty three thousand. By city ordinance, that would mean we'd have one point five million dollars that we would hold in that fund balance. And then we have a six hundred and sixty thousand that we hold for compensated absences. So we would have about three and a half million available at the end of that, the budget year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, for other things. Again, that's probably in the range of about a million dollars less than the reality of what we will have, but from a budgeted standpoint, that is what we would have. Ca, we have a capital improvements fund, has re, net revenues coming in of uh, two point seven five million in transfers. One point one million in grant revenues uh, related to the Bengal Highland Intersection and twenty five thousand in interest revenues.
Will go up.
Yep, that, we're gonna expect that to go up. When we review that, which I forgot to do last go around. Um, expenditures, we have four million two hundred and fifty three thousand in new expenses. Which is four million and fifty thousand in street items, striping, et cetera, you can see the details there. And then sidewalk projects of two hundred and three thousand. And then we will eventually rebudget our items that from this year that don't finish, and we'll do that in September or October of this year, but we won't know all the details until about that time. So expenses are four million two hundred and fifty three thousand, and that would take our, our beginning fund balance would decrease by. Three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars will leave us with four hundred and seventy four in this fund available for appropriations at the end of the budget year. For our stormwater fund. We try and hold about five hundred thousand in this fund at any given time, and that is our projection of available funds for the beginning of the year. Revenues of one million four hundred and six thousand dollars. Transfers in of two hundred thousand dollars, so about one point six million of net money coming in. Ex, expenses of one point six million dollars going out. That would leave us with, again, that five hundred thousand dollars in there, and we keep that in there for, in case we have uh, a, a failure of. Storm drains or something that we need to do.
If I may take you back, just a quick question, uh, when you talked about two hundred and three thousand uh, dollars for sidewalks.
Yeah.
Is that for the seventeen hundred um. Uh, east project, or is that for all sidewalk improvements throughout a fiscal year?
So the, the seventeen hundred east is already budgeted in our current budget, so none of this money is that. That still is in the works, because we haven't finished it yet, but these are new projects outside of what's already budgeted. So the items are twenty three hundred east, we've got forty thousand for engineering and design. We've got a hot, couple of hawk signals that are going.
Oh, so that's, I'm sorry, okay, I should have caught that, thank you, I see now it's delineated, thank you, okay, thank you.
And so we would end this one again with five hundred thousand, and that's just a reserve in case we have, you know, some kind of failure of, of a storm line or something. Or something comes to our attention that needs immediate attention, we can have some funds to be able to address that. Our CDRA fund, we're projecting to have about one point five million dollars as our uh, ending fund balance. Our beginning fund balance, uh, ending for this year, beginning for next year. And that's. Then we'll have revenues. Of about ten million, ten million, ten thousand dollars on the fund balance, and again, that's gonna be reviewed and well increased. Seven hundred and fifty thousand of tax increment financing relate, or, or tax increment revenues related to the Canyon Center project. And it will probably be slightly less than that, but it'll be right around there. And then operational revenue from the Hillside Plaza Shopping Center of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is tran, a transfer in, or sorry, this is related to rent there. A transfer in from the general fund of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover debt service. In there, then expenditures of about ten thousand in miscellaneous professional fees related to the different projects. Seven hundred and fifty thousand in costs related to the Canyon Center tax increment money as that comes in. We have to distribute that out to the in, individual areas. Then we will have five hundred and fifty thousand of um, operational expenditures related to the Hillside Plaza. And then debt service payments of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars related to the Hillside Plaza bond. So our ending projected CDRA fund balance would be that same one point five million dollars. Split up between our Fort Union Project one point one seven eight and Cottonwood Corporate Center about three hundred and fifty two. Um, thousand for those two items. Our debt service fund ha, is gonna have a starting fund balance of thirteen million three fifty seven, and most of that is in. A, a escrow fund to pay off our twenty fourteen and sixteen bonds that will occur. On July first of twenty twenty four, literally the day after this budget ends. Our expenditures are expected to be two point nine five one million dollars for these items below here. Uh, many vehicles, as well as uh, some building bond expenditures. And then revenues coming in of two point seven eight nine million dollars, that's a transfer in from the general fund. Um, are at some expenditures, or some, sorry, some interest from our escrow funds that will come in. Uh, and then just some miscellaneous little bit there, and that will mean that we will have a decrease of two hundred and eighty five thousand in our escrow funds. And that will push the net available fund balance to six hundred and seventy three dollars. We'll still have just a little bit more than thirteen million dollars in our escrow fund at the end of the year. But again, that will be used literally the next day at the end of this budget year uh, to pay off the twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen bonds. So. And that's kind of the summary, uh, there are some other schedules behind here. This is a very high level summary of all the funds and all of the restrictions and things that we have on our bu, our funds. And then it goes into much, much more details of each of the funds, uh, the general fund is four pages long of revenues and expenditures. The um. Other funds are generally one page each, um, but all that is there, and of, and all this will be posted on our website tomorrow again. So that it can be accessed by anybody who wants to take a look at that.
Perfect, questions for Scott?
No, I would just encourage, when you get this posted in the morning. This is the time for the public to go in and review and look through the budget in detail to find out. What uh, money is coming in, where it's being spent. And between now and June twentieth, is the time correct? Alert us so that we can uh make corrections or there's something that's out of whack.
Yes.
And may I just add, we we will be having conversations in the next several work sessions related to the budget. Obviously, we've done that each year and because we recognize there's a number of things that we have to address, so we'll be having those conversations, but we will have it posted in the morning um on the city website.
It's not cast in stone. It's just a.
Yeah, this is this is kind of the the, you know, we're maybe at the eighty percent level in terms of the work that we've done, and now it's in a more finished pers- perspective. And the co- the public needs to comment, get their information back to each of you. And uh you, of course, will talk to us uh through uh Tim Tingey, and we'll make adjustments as needed.
A little more strict than the Pirate's Code, but.
Yes.
Not.
A little more.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate your time. Thanks for all your hard work and your staff. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, adopting a tentative budget for the period of July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Providing for a public inspection of such budget, establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider adoption of such budget and providing for public notice of such hearings.
I'll I'll make that motion.
Okay, well.
To accept twenty twenty-three dash twenty for the tentative budget.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Newell and a second from Councilmember Bracken.
Definitely not argue with voices that come from above.
Final questions, comments? Then I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Item six point two, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, which is approving a firework display contract with Lantus Productions for twenty the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Butlerville Days. We had the opportunity to discuss this item in our work session. Any other questions or comments from the council? Could I then get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, approving a firework display contract with Lantus Productions?
We approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one and note that uh, and that's what does a really good job in the contracts and making sure that we're taking care of.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Motion to approve from Councilmember Bracken and a second from Councilmember Newell. Final questions? I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
I will vote.
Yes.
Six point three, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, approving a drone show performance contract with Open Sky Productions LLC for twenty twenty-three Butlerville Days. Uh, we also had the opportunity to discuss this in a work session. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Uh, yes, I would like to make the comment that uh if we were trying out this drone show uh as a potential to replace the fireworks show next year, I could support it. But I don't understand that to be the case, and so I uh I don't think it's the best way for the city to spend its money, and I will not be able to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. Uh, kind of could I, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, approving a drone show performance contract with Open Sky Productions LLC for the twenty twenty-three Butlerville Days.
Might move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. Um, I appreciate uh the sponsors that have come up to cover a good portion of that cost and the other things made arrangements so this fit into the existing budget with.
And and I'll second with the the slight note also. I I really wanted to second this because we're seeing as technology develops, more and more interest of our young people in STEM. And the drones are can definitely connected to that STEM environment, so I really like the nurturing this opportunity has for the young people in our community.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we have a a motion to approve from Councilmember Bracken and a second from Councilmember Newell. Final questions, comments? I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Burrell.
No.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Item six point four, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, approving an amendment to agreements with CERC Inc. for construction manager, general contractor services. We also had the opportunity to discuss this in our work session. Final questions, comments from the council?
I'm just glad that this project is finally getting been needed for a while, and hopefully it will provide uh better facilities for our public work staff as they work in future difficult winters, hot summers.
Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three.
I'll make that motion. I'll go ahead.
Right, I'll second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Newell and a second from Councilmember Bracken. Final questions? Uh, I'll now call for the vote. Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, our last action item for tonight is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, approving entry into a development agreement with Ivory Development LLC. Uh, we also discussed this item earlier in the work session. Any final questions or comments from the council?
Yes, I uh was delighted to hear that this uh agreement uh includes a time limit that Ivory Homes has two years from the pre-construction meeting to complete the park. I think this will be fair, and uh I know that my residents uh in that area are anxious to have this resolved. And uh so hopefully they'll have a real nice public park in uh about two years from now, just over two years from now.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I'll now entertain a motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, approving entry into a development agreement with Ivory Development LLC.
I'll make that motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-four.
And I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Burrell and a second from Councilmember Bracken. Final questions, comments?
I would make the comment that this deal actually has come out to work very nicely for the city for the amount of money that we were going to be able, we were going to put in, get some land, get areas to park, have it constructed. Um, we've built other parks, and they don't usually come. Uh, and we're built out. We usually don't get this much area to to put in something new, so I appreciate Ivory, Ivory is willing to work with us, and the uh former owner was the uh uh Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. They're willing to work with us and Ivory as well to get it done.
Thank you, customer Bri- or Bracken. I agree with that statement. Uh, final uh questions, comments? Did we get a second?
No second, then I'll do it. Okay, so I already did it. I just have a short-term memory loss.
Okay, so at this point, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
I will vote. Okay, our last item for this evening is just approval of our consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session and business meeting for April eighteenth. Can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Was that uh, were those minutes amended based on my input? Okay, I never saw that, but it'll be. Oh, okay.
I had a, I had a couple in there myself, just. Uh, well, I guess in that case, and uh I'll uh move that we approve consent color calendar with the corrections.
That's the meeting minutes with the corrections from April eighteenth? Okay, I can second that.
If you all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that is is it for this evening. So I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will motion that we adjourn tonight's business meeting.
I will second because Sean's probably comfortable already, so.
I stay comfortable.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.